No telling why this is going to happen. We will try to keep it 20 minutes, maybe a half hour. So I we appreciate your patience. Thank you. And hey, counsel, you want to put your microphones to the ready, please? Ma'am clerk, how are we doing with the electronics?
We're good.
Ready. Now, you're going to turn it off and turn it back on when we come back?
Just pause it.
You pause it? There's a sign on the screen that says pause. Okay, good. Good. Um, Rob, does this end up on, like I did the other day? Does this end up on YouTube? Public can go to YouTube and find this?
I believe so. I'm always here, so I don't know.
This meeting? They can go to agendas on the city website?
Yes, no, but, um.
Oh, does it go?
You should go to.
No, sir, it doesn't go YouTube.
Not straight to YouTube. It goes straight to our website. Do you want to run this, sir?
Well, that's how I looked at one last night. I went to YouTube and got it. So does it cost money?
I can look at the scene usually.
Yeah, let's see if we could also give the public another way to find it. That would be good. Okay. Uh, microphones at the ready. Manager standing tall. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the city of St. Mary's, Georgia. This is a special call, City Council Meeting for February 22nd, 2023. The invocation is from our council member, Alan Rassie. Alan?
Let us pray. Do everything for the beautiful day you've given us, and it truly is been a beautiful day in our neighborhood. And Lord, for the blessings you bestow upon us daily, we just thank you. Thank you for the men and women that serve our country and protect, those are law enforcement needs, see here locally. Lord, be with us in our meeting today, guide us, and give us direction. As the citizens, we try to do everything we can to listen to what the citizens give us. And we thank you for this day and blessings, and you this name. Amen.
Amen.
Blessings to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best hope with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am clerk, we need a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilman Jones, post one.
Here.
Councilman Connor, post two.
Here.
Councilman Riley, post four.
Here.
Councilman Rassie, post five.
Here.
Councilman James, post six.
Present.
Mayor Morsy.
I am here. Ma'am clerk, will you check? Got a text that there's no sound.
Do you have it coming through?
Okay, well, we're going to go. I need a motion to go into executive session, and so while we're there, maybe we can work some.
Second.
That's from Mr. Riley. Okay, and I can have a second for that from.
Second.
Ms. James.
I apologize, sir. I didn't hear Mr. Riley. That was for the legal, real estate personnel.
No, it's for legal personnel and real estate. All right, any comments, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Ma'am clerk, that's unanimous. Uh, pu- public, please know we'll be as expeditious as we can. Thank you.
Okay. I have a look at you. I just remember the four.
Ma'am clerk?
Yes, sir.
For a quick minutes, Mr. Jones made Mr. Connor.
Connor.
And it was unanimous. Okay. Now, could I have a motion to come back into regular session?
Go ahead.
Mr. Riley?
Second.
Second from Ms. James. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Ma'am clerk, that's unanimous. We're back into, um, regular session, and we understand we may lose one of our, um, council people, but, uh, welcome, Mr. Williams, for your presentation. And, uh, um, anything that you need?
All right, thank you very much for the opportunity to come up here and speak about the Aquatic Center. And I do know that, uh, it's a little bit of short notice, so I do appreciate your all's time. Um, but, you know, we're looking forward to get some work done before, uh, opening in our season. Up here, I have Mr. Donovan Star. This is our newly hired director for the Aquatic Center. He's been with us for a few months.
Thank you. Looking forward.
Um, and he's going to be up here to help me navigate through some of the questions and things like that.
Pretty, pretty, pretty nice hat.
Thanks. All right, so the presentation's basically, um, we're coming up here because there's just things that we need to work on at the Aquatic Center. Um, there's some ideas that will help us, um, generate some revenue that's going to help us to sustain where the park's at. Um, so going into our agenda, what we're going to pretty much cover is going to be we're going to recognizing that we are outdated. You know, that the park is 22 years old. Uh, we're recognizing, uh, that we need to make repairs, keeping up with the park for another 20 years, um, preferably a lot longer, growing the park for the growing city, thinking out of the box a little bit. We're going to discuss what my plan is, front internal entrances, island life, and increasing profits where we can. So that's going to be wrapped up in this, in this, uh, segment. So looking at the park, it is outdated. St. Mary's Park Center was established in 2021, uh, by the city. There's not been much change to the attractions or how the park operates, day-to-day functions. Obviously, the chemicals and the way that we take care of the water and stuff like that, that's evolved over 22 years. Um, but just our day-to-day, our structures in there, we have the same slides, the same lazy river. So the park pretty much looks the same as it did when I took my kids 20 years ago. Uh, I think my first time at the Aquatic Center was like 2002. So necessary repairs, when we start looking at what the Aquatic Center looks like now, 22 years later, and I only have a few photos for the demonstration, um, but there's, there's definitely some repairs needed. So looking at some of the photos, you can see, uh, the slide inside the painting, there's some gelling that needs to take place, there's some preventative maintenance that needed to happen, um, waxing two times a year. There's little things that needed to be done in the past that we can't really correct now, but moving forward, we need to be able to take care of these structures. And in some instances, we're going to end up having to replace a few of them. Um, if you look further, sort of operating open, we have many needs, from touch-up paint to significant repairs. The stairs, if you take a look, it's probably hard to see it on the picture, but the metal is showing, uh, a lot of rust. The concrete, as, as patrons go up and down the staircase and their bathing suits are wet, that water pools right there, it gets under the concrete and it pushes it up. So there's some safety issues. Uh, your basic safety concerns would be bare feet going up and down, something like that with rust, um, and then to actually decay of the metal and things like that, some bigger concerns. Uh, the needs for repair will always be a focus when running a water park, but investing will ensure long-lasting attractions. And a lot of people will compare a water park to a boat. You're, you're just going to always have to be spending money to upgrade and fix things. So some of the repairs we're doing this season, slide repair, gel coating is needed inside the slide, staircase, we're going to be sandblasting and painting, um, as needed. The stairs, I will say, in the next couple of years will probably be need, need to be torn down and replaced altogether, uh, but we've had some folks come out and look at it, and we, some sandblasting and painting, we can get a, uh, two to three more years out of it, uh, but it's something we need a plan for. Uh, the lazy river, it's, there's holes that need patching, which started today, uh, and underneath, underneath the lining also needs attention, uh, and that's another attraction that's going to, we're going to have to focus on because in the near future, we're going to have to replace that liner altogether. Some of the additions, though, that can help us get here, um, some creative ideas that's going to help generate revenue within the park, uh, cabanas, this is needed for families to stay relaxed. Obviously, this is a revenue source for the park. River bridge, this is a bridge that will be placed over the lazy river, and the purpose of the bridge, one is to get folks to the cabanas, but that's going to allow us to have a conduit for power source so that we can have electricity for the cabanas, for fans, and, um, there may be future involvement with small refrigerators or TVs in the future. Uh, there'll be a snack shack out there, which will allow, while we're having cabanas and more folks in the island, uh, to be able to get a cool drink or some beverage or some treats. Uh, there'll be a mini playground will be put in. We have a small island patch in the front. I don't have a photo of it, um, but in there, we'll have a small jungle gym for kids, uh, the smaller children so that they have something to do, uh, when they get tired of swimming. Uh, we'll also, we need to, we need some new lockers. The, the one set that's already out there is, is getting pretty old and, and beat up. Uh, we've started to expand our retail shop this season, so where it was a small space, we've expanded it to double its size so that we can offer more products for our guests, uh, to include t-shirts, hats, sunglasses, things that you would need at, at an aquatic center. Um, and then something to help generate, we're looking to put some banners along some small parts of our fence. We don't want to cover up, uh, the pretty landscape, we don't want to cover up the lake, but there are certain parts, um, that are prime real estate for, for some banners, so that is something we can do to, to at least help with bringing some revenue in for these So what are we doing this season? So the decor, again, it's signs. We're going to be putting some posts and rope around the lazy river. We're doing some updated, much-needed landscape. Uh, we're, uh, at really no extra cost to the, to anybody, the taxpayers or the city. Uh, we've gotten our hands on a couple of flag poles. We're going to put them in the center island when you approach our entrance. The right now, it's gated by a yellow fence around that big driving circle, so we want to put some landscape and the, the flag poles in there that has the city flag as well as the American flag. Um, with the updated landscape outside, a little bit inside, uh, we're going to put a large directional sign in the interior island when you first walk in the main entrance, where the playground will be. It'll be like a Jimmy Buffett-style sign with the different arrows pointing different colors, and, uh, we're actually going to have the Kiwanis come in and paint and take care of that for us. Updated uniforms. Right now, our staff wears t-shirts. Um, we're going to go to a more polo-style shirt, but we were able to find some cost-effective polo shirts that just look sharp and kind of goes with the new image we're trying to portray. Uh, food and beverage, so I will tell you that our kitchen inside the Aquatic Center, uh, is just not, um, up to par to serve the food that we've been serving. So in the past, I think we just kind of patched some things together, or the personnel that were there. So we, there's not an adequate hood system in there, so at this point, I pulled the plug on this cooking burgers or anything in that. Uh, just worried until we get the updated equipment in there and put a, a proper hood system in, uh, we're going to rely on some outside food services. So I can, at this point, probably go and announce, uh, we're going to have an outside food vendors from Wednesday through Saturday, and that will be Chick-fil-A. They're going to come in and provide food for our park. And then on the remaining days, from Sunday to Tuesday, we're going to put some food trucks in there. We're going to set up an area, uh, at the rear of the park where they'll be able to drive in. We'll have some picnic tables and some appropriate area for that, and then the food vendors can sell some food to our patrons. Uh, there'll be a snow cone vendor that will come in. He'll be there every day, set up by the kids park. Um, and that's interactive for the kids because the snow cone will be provided to them, but they'll be able to go up to the sidecar and pour their own syrup and things. Uh, St. Mary's Craft Center will still offer snacks, ice cream, retail snack shack stuff, concession, uh, and bottled waters, which is a big seller for the park. So just, uh, just a basic timeline, there's actually a lot of stuff I can shove in this, but, you know, in January, we, we expanded the retail, we started it, and today I can say they were hanging the slats on the walls. It's, it's actually starting to look really good. Uh, this month, we're continuing on the retail design, staffing focus. Uh, we, we're working on with the high school, the local high schools, so that we get out there and, uh, recruit 95% of our staff are high school kids. Uh, the build-out funding, which I'm doing today, uh, and then locking in our vendors and the lazy river repair. Moving into next month, the build-out, complete repairs to the slide, the stairs, uh, stock the retail shop. We've also included in our build-out this year, we've included a first aid room, where in the past, we just had a, there was kind of a chair if you got overheated. Uh, this time, we actually have a, a real first aid room that's going to be equipped with the, the proper bedding seats, uh, the equipment needed for that. Um, and we'll be working with the fire department, too, to make sure it's properly staffed and, um, it's accessible for them as well if they have to come in if we did have an emergency. Um, we are looking also, I'm sorry, we're looking to try to get the bridge built, um, as we continue our recruitments. In April, we're looking for orientation of all the staff coming in, complete our build-out, setting the park up for business, and our goal is to have a soft open the last, uh, weekend of April. Uh, Kiwanis is also planning a day where they're going to come in, do some basic repairs, and they're going to do some painting and kind of make the park look fun as we set up our umbrellas and things. So additional content, uh, something else we're doing, so we're also going to do internal swim training. So one of our, uh, assistant park manager right now, Ms. Carrie, she has, she's finishing up the tail end of her training. She'll be able to do all the lifeguard training, uh, as well as swim lessons, and then she's going to do some CPR. So keeping it in-house is going to help us with the cost in that. Where, uh, in the past, we actually leaned on our kids we hired to come in, and they would have to pay for their own lifeguard training and things. Um, and to me, it's not a, it's not a good recruitment, um, to, to have a kid out of high school, probably their first job, spend a lot of money in the, in the front end. This will make it easier if we're, if we're able to do this instruction inside the park, uh, by our own staff, and obviously, the cost won't be the same. And we'll, we'll be able to do this at a lot cheaper rate, and, and then it'll be a good recruitment for our people. So retail expansion, we can offer more and realistic options to our guests, items you would expect in a retail store at, you know, a water park. Revenues are expected to surpass the prior years in these areas, and new working lockers are designed for the needs of our guests. Obviously, that is a revenue source, too, that will help us internally. The first station, uh, the first aid station will have an air-conditioned room, offers overheated guests and injured guests to privacy. Life-saving equipment, personal will have a working space to ensure public safety and within our parks. Looking at the pictures up here, you'll see food and beverage. The park is not prepared, as I said before, to have a working, safe kitchen and to take care of the needs of our guests, so we will be partnering with Chick-fil-A for those needs. Uh, you got the food truck, and you can see the cone of ice. If you've ever been to the, the Jacksonville Zoo, they're always there, and it's, it's the same one. So this is actually a smaller version that's perfect for the size of our park. Uh, let's see, again, we will offer snacks, drinks, and ice, as I said. And if I'm going too fast, let me know, I'm just, I know we're time constrained. Uh, so things to be successful, so obviously, we'll need approval from the council, we're looking at the price. So, well, we'll go ahead and jump on that. So part of this packet, I was looking to come up here with my price increases. These are, this is my opinions based on what we need to refit this park and to be able to not only make it safe, but to make it last. Obviously, there's some, there's some major expenses, so doing any kind of pool work, anybody with a swimming pool is going to know it's very expensive, but when you take a smaller pool that you would have in your backyard and then magnify it by what we have at the, at the Aquatic Center, um, the price tag is just enormous to what you would think it would cost for in a water park. It's everything, um, everything's expensive. There's, there's nothing cheap that we can put in there. So with the price, so looking at price increases is how can I not only survive a season, when I'm looking at this, but how can I survive a season and plan to, you know, reproduce new stairs, take care of the, the lining of our river, um, replace the gelling and stuff for the slide and such? So, uh, looking at these prices, these prices are not locked in. These are just my recommendations for, uh, planning the future of the Aquatic Center and how we can take care of these costs without having to come to the podium every year and ask for a paycheck or a check, um, to fix these. As much as we can fix internally, that is, that's my ultimate plan, is to, to make this more self-efficient. But today, I am asking for, and it's worded, it's not really a loan, but I'm looking for $60,000. Um, so just kind of a backstory, uh, our Public Works was purchasing some equipment. That equipment jumped up in price, like a lot of things in this year. Um, so they have made the decision not to afford on those, on that purchase, and that's where I see the $60,000 would come from. And so for the Aquatic Center, asking for $60,000, when I ask for it, if it comes out of that bucket, uh, we do believe that the extra additions like cabanas and things, we'll be able to pay that back. So essentially, it is an internal loan with no, no interest. It allows us to do what we want to do, to make the park a little bit better, um, and I think a little happier for, for our citizens, uh, because it'll just be some new stuff in there, it'll be, it'll brighten it up. Um, but at the same point, that money will be returned back to the city, and that's, that's my ultimate plan if, if we go this route. Uh, but then I would pay that back over five years, $12,000 installments. Uh, preferably a lot faster if we have a great season, like I think I, we will, uh, probably be able to pay a big chunk of that back. Uh, the build-out's starting soon, the cabanas are needed for their revenue, retail expansion, snack shack, the bridge, and the child's play area. So the needed repairs that fall under this are the slide needs. Again, we need the gel coating, stair needs, sandblasting and painting, lazy river is in the middle of patching right now. Landscape needs attention to include the flag poles being installed. So, let's see, so just to break down what we're looking at, repairs right now for the slide, for the gel coating, we're at 16,500. That's actually a pretty good figure, and that's because they're giving us a discount this year. Stairs are 10,500 right now. This is our lowest bids, uh, when we price these, uh, 10,500 to repair our stairs. Um, the items I have listed on here as budget, AC, mechanical, and additional supplies, uh, and uniforms, we feel like we have enough in our budget right now to be able to just move forward and get these, these items taken care of. Um, but if anything gets a little bit more expensive, uh, or if we can do these build-outs a little cheaper and save money somewhere and, and, and just kind of be good stewards with the money if we get it, then we'll be able to put that money into some things like our AC and mechanical, and that'll allow us to take that money and allocate it to other items that we need for the park. Uh, the cabanas with the fans and furniture, we're looking at approximately about 7,000 to do that. Bridge with the power conduit, about 6,500. The rope fencing, we think we can do that for 1,500. Child's playground, approximately 2,000. Snack shack, 4,000. The retail expansion, we're saying 2,500. Um, obviously, if there's a little money left over and we can put it towards some retail, we'll get better, um, high-end stuff in there as well, with sunglasses, hats, and things. Uh, lockers, we're looking at $4,500 for two units, um, which would double the lockers we have. We currently just have one old locker set right now. And then the landscape, we're, we're estimating with some minor trees, bushes, and things, we're, we're thinking we can do that for about $3,000 with the labor. So three years at a glance, just to kind of give you an idea, if you look at 2020, obviously, that was a COVID year. The park, uh, was negative 145. 2021, we did, uh, do well. We made 53,000 that year, uh, that were black, that was in the black. And then 2022, 13,419, but I say that with a grain of salt because that money did not go towards repairing any of these items that need to be repaired. So if the park stayed on its plan to fix these items, we would have been, we would have been negative every year. Um, and I just want to go ahead and throw, because we do have some community, uh, citizens that, that are involved in, in our day-to-day operations and, and which they should be, and I think that's a great thing, but, um, these, these numbers may not match up to what their numbers are. I'm looking at this as a season from May to August, and not as our budget. As you know, our budget starts July, so those numbers may look skewed when you look at that, but if you were to take it by season, as the aquatic parks open, that's where these numbers come from.
Charlie, uh, uh, because we have a little bit of a constraint here, uh, could I interrupt you?
Oh, yes, sir.
So, uh, to use a, a word that came from the Joint Development Authority a long time ago, could we bifurcate this conversation? And let's talk about the $60,000.
Okay.
And, um, I was going to ask counsel their opinions, but here's my opinion to get the conversation started. I sincerely appreciate the business mode of how you all have approached this problem and done it in a business fashion with a business solution. Um, but one of the techniques that we do have in the city is we amend the budget. And I'm looking at accounting over here to make sure that we're not heading in the wrong direction, but I, I, I saw the offer about taking out a loan, basically, and I think, um, basically, this is a standard structure that says, uh, you know, we need to spend more than was budgeted. And part of what everybody is recognizing is the reason we're here and have such a great presentation is because you were brought on board, both of you, thank you, and you presented exactly what we want for this asset, which is how to burnish it, make it better. And so I, my, my preference would be if you need $60,000 and you've explained to us exactly why, I, I really not in favor of this loan concept. I think.
Yes, sir.
It's from a standard process, I'd much rather see us say, would you be satisfied with amending the budget by $60,000 to allow this project to happen?
Yep, um.
I got a couple.
You do, too? Okay. Just a couple of things. First thing is, you know, great plan and great way to think strategically. I think the one thing we definitely need to, alluding to what the mayor was speaking to, is, um, I'm also business-minded, and I, I could tell from your presentation that we were thinking like a business. Um, our goal is to provide, provide a service and to do it and maintain ourselves in the black. And, you know, I look at the retail, et cetera, you know, as a plus. So I think if we can, um, manage the cost with exactly what you've done, like you presented a capital improvement plan, that will help us to keep within the budget. And at this point, you know, obviously, we have not, um, we have not, um, so far, for whatever reason, um, maintained the park and had, uh, adequate, adequate budgeting to be able to do that. Um, you know, around the, and I, I would also say that we have options for how we provide the 60,000. We do have our ARPA funds available, um, and, you know, as of now, we spent less than 10% of those funds on, you know, community opportunities. Um, we spend a lot more on infrastructure so far, so that's something that's out there. I don't, I'm just going to put that there. Um, as far as price increases, um, you have to understand that, you know, we, this is a community of working class people, and so we want to make sure that, um, if we're providing, uh, recreation for them, that they can actually afford to use it. So we have to be careful with that. Um, but good plan, I think we just need to focus on, um, providing the service and making sure that within our budget going forward, that we're able to take care of, um, these items, and I, I look at them as amenities, and they will more than likely generate, um, some revenue, but I think we need to keep the focus on providing a good service. But really good on the strategic plan. I mean, I think it's great.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, I'd say the exact same words with respect to the plan that both the mayor and Ms. James have said, it's really good. I, I don't know if the ARPA funds can be used. If it is, that's a good, uh, good choice. I, I have my doubts about that, but, uh, and I see her shaking her head, no, and she's the expert back there.
Oh, they're in the final rules, they can be used for that, yes.
Well, anyway, we'd have to confirm that.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying whether we can or can't. And, uh, you know, the other thing is, uh, the pool, and please take this in the right way that I mean it, is you personally spend a lot of time on the pool, being assistant city manager, and we have all these projects that are working and being, uh, uh, parceled out so that we keep attention on them, and the big projects that affects the future of this city. So I take this to the point where have we considered getting the PSA involved in this? There may be some hi- uh, history on this that I'm unaware of, but that would, uh, take us out of the, uh, the, uh, sort of managing a, this pool, which is not really one of the, uh, services that a city should be, uh, taking care of. I'm sure there's some that do that. So I'm thinking from a practical sense and getting focused on, uh, what we're doing. And even though this plan's as good as it is, and I know how hard you both worked on this, and, uh, we appreciate that greatly, you know, just the time that it takes to do those things would be better served, I think, if you were, uh, focused on these big projects. I'm, you know, this is something that, uh, that in my mind, we need to find the best solution for this, and I think it's going to take a little bit more time than a special call meeting on, uh, a Wednesday afternoon. If some of our council people can't even stay and, uh, and, uh, attend because they've already got other commitments, so I, so my first thought is we ought to not be voting. voting. And also, the mayor mentioned, if we do decide that it's best to stay in the city, then I like the idea of budgeting, not loaning. It's, you know, that's not what the general fund is designed for. So that's my comments.
Okay. Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Jones?
I probably have a little bit more history about some of this than a lot of people. Back when the PSA was created, we took over all the recreation from all of the cities and the county and put it under one roof. And the City of St. Mary's gave up everything except the pool. And we all know the reason why they didn't give up the pool. But anyway.
No, we don't.
Huh?
I don't know the reason. I, I, absent the history and the.
Well, the, the pool wasn't open to black people.
Ah, I didn't know that.
Yes. In 1994, there were some articles out. It came out in the paper. Bonnie Wooton, her husband was a, a police officer. Their child was trying, they were trying to get their child in there during that time, and they were denied. So everything was, and, and I, I brought this up before, but I don't like to create issues where they shouldn't be created. I figured if they, if we weren't welcome there, then, you know, I wasn't going to cause any problems. And I, I really respect you for the effort that you've made in putting this package together. It's a, it's a great package. And the last two years, I asked a question, how come this wasn't turned over to the PSA during that time, during 2000, 2001, or whenever it was created?
Mr. Mayor, may I respond to that that has come up? And if you will remember back, it's probably been six years ago, the PSA did run that facility.
I remember that.
For several years. And not banging on PSA or anything, that is a lot of reason we're in the situation that we're in, with making necessary repairs and structure.
Yeah. And I was told that, you know, I, I know about the PSA taking over and running it. But it was told to me, I don't know whether it's true or not, that the City of St. Mary's wanted the citizens from St. Mary's to have a special rate over anybody else that came in. I don't know whether this is true or not. This is what, what I was told by people that worked at the PSA during that time. And the Aquatic Center is a great area. I mean, but, you know, we had multiple problems hiring people last year. And every year, you know, we come up with the same thing. It's, I, I don't look for it to make any money. But I don't want it to be a distress on other county employees, the people that are hiring, people that are doing the financing and everything else. And I asked the question again, wouldn't it be better off to turn it over to the PSA, where we already given them a half million dollars, over a half million dollars to, for recreation? This way, we can free up a, a lot of different areas.
If I could.
Thanks.
So from a thought process, I'm listening to short-term and longer-term. And I, I want to make sure, in order for you to be able to accomplish this, this money, you need this money so that you can have all of this done by May.
That is correct. And I can take away if I needed to. But what we can't take away is we need the stairs repaired at a minimum in the slide, or we wouldn't.
So we have the immediate, the immediate need. It doesn't mean, and what I might suggest is that one of the action items or part of a motion could be not only that we make a determination about what to do with the $60,000, but maybe in a second motion, we say we institute a discussion with the, the PSA about whether or not we, they think there's some value in transfer of management. And that, but that would, that's going to take some time. And that's, you know, if that's done in May, I would be surprised, simply because of the players that are on both sides. And so I would suggest that we deal with the immediacy of the $60,000. And if we would like to deal with the PSA, and that idea for the longer term, that we do that. But then also, there is one more item that hasn't been discussed, which I, I would like to discuss here. I don't know if everybody can stay. But I, the, that is on, on the rates. And that's a separate discussion, because I think, and for right now, if we were to deal with the, the, I meant either a loan or an amended budget for short-term repair, are you amenable to doing that? And then having the discussion about the PSA at a regular council meeting, so the public can participate?
All right.
And then, but we can also bring up the, the issue about the rates. And perhaps we can continue the discussion about the rates at another time.
Yes, sir. I agree with that.
But I do think the $60,000 has probably got a little bit of criticality to it.
It's urgent. And we, we need to fix the safety issues and make sure that the park is whole, even if we determine that we can move it over to the PSA and have them take it. Because they can't take something's defective.
This is just my suggestion of a way to proceed here.
Well, I think, I think that's a good suggestion. And, you know, you're talking about prices. Chlorine, a few years ago, was 99 cents, I mean, $99. And then it went from $99 up to almost $500. I think it came back down to $200 and some dollars now. So, you know, the cost of living is going to fluctuate. And I don't think it's going to come down to where it was. But I agree with the mayor. The more, the immediate action that we need is to see that you get the funds to do the repairs. Because regardless as to whether the PSA take it or whether we keep it, these repairs will have to be done.
Right.
And the long-term range about who's going to manage it and how it's going to be done, we can discuss this at a later, later date.
And I'll be honest with you. Me, for me personally, let's get through this season, and then we can discuss it. You know, if we say at a later date, we, we're not, I, I have some serious issues with PSA right now. And because based off the history I have, and I'd rather take our time, make time adjustment if we need to down the road.
Okay.
I support the repairs.
Ms. James?
Sure. Yep. I'd like to make a motion that we provide the $60,000 that's needed for the repairs and upkeep. But I also would like to explore those funds coming from ARPA versus general funds.
Second?
Are you doing it as an amended amendment to the budget?
Yes.
Or what, it's, yeah, I'm seeing her head's shaking.
I just said, I just said that we take the $60,000 from our ARPA funds. So if we can amend that, we have not added.
Yeah. That where the money comes from, I think is, is, is not pertinent. It's that the budget itself is changed by $60,000.
Let's do that. Okay.
You got to let the expert be telling you what to do.
Gotcha.
They're in the back.
I don't think, the issue is whether or not we amend the budget for $60,000. Where the money comes from, I don't want to talk about right now.
Yes.
Good. And you, the experts will work it out. And then you can report back when we have the next meeting, what you think the best process is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let me restate the motion.
Yes, please.
Okay. So we move to make an amendment to the budget for the Aquatic Center by any amount of $60,000.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Do we need to take the other one?
There is no budget ordinance on the agenda. And so when you mentioned budget, amended the budget, instead of just approving the $60,000.
Okay. So we don't have to.
Yeah, we don't have a budget ordinance on the, on the.
On the agenda. Yes.
So you just, if you wanted to say.
We're just approving the $60,000.
Yeah. Okay.
Second.
All right. Any more discussion? Is it, is it clear for you all?
It is. And I do want to say.
And the suggestion for the, for the staff and, and whoever else on council might be involved in the process is you'll determine best method for how to provide the $60. The council's made its preference known.
Yes, sir.
And then the, we will, we'll, we'll make another, either recommend, tasking or, or motion about the PSA negotiation here. So any other discussion on this part, the $60,000?
Get it done.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. That's unanimous. All right. Now, we're, we're down to.
Thank you very much.
Three, three members and the mayor. And so.
Make it real quick.
Yes, sir. And this is.
This is for the cipher grant. This is asking permission to go ahead for the grant. And what the cipher grant is, is that it's a grant for hiring firefighters.
Can we get him back to vote?
Sir?
Can we get him back to vote?
We have.
Who back there?
It's all right. Okay. It's for three positions for a three-year period and the retention of those individuals for a couple of years after that. Last time, we have been recipients of this grant previously. And we had six then, three full-time, three part-time positions that we filled. And we just did away with those three part-time positions. And we're wanting to fill them with full-time personnel.
So how many years? I'm sorry.
It's a, it's a, it pays for the salary for three years. This is just permission to go ahead for it. I just want to make sure that y'all are aware of all the different components of the grant.
Did you ask for discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. That was going to do the motion, but you go ahead.
I make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Riley, any further discussion or maybe some clarifications for us? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. That's unanimous, including the mayor's vote. Now, council, should we task, that might be a good one, task the city manager, and I think we can do that without a vote, to explore negotiation options with the PSA for feedback to the council about what options might be or if there's any interest? That's what I hear, that there's the preference of the council?
Yeah. I, I think that's the right thing to do, Mr. Mayor, in this case. And let's take a look at what we really need to do and how we ensure that we're not overtasking some of our folks with things that really didn't apply to the service that we're required to give the citizens.
Yeah. And this is in no way indicating that anything is going to change.
Yeah.
It's, it's exploration only.
Explore it.
That's all it is.
That's what I said.
So I want to make sure staff and, and citizens and, and council is also clear that, I mean, this is what you do. You should never be afraid to explore. And we'll find out if there's things to change, things are the same, or we, we've got a good process and we have a good plan. But sidestep here, capital improvement plans also need to include the pie-in-the-sky ideas. So maybe, thank you very much for this capital improvement plan. But if you were to go below the line on capital improvement wish list ideas, particularly, we talked about what, what would be new and exciting and how much would it be? Don't need it at the next meeting or anything. But we would be very interested to say, longer term, we think we ought to have X, Y, or Z. And then we can see if Mr. Horton could find some funding sources for us to maybe explore that.
I do have some good ideas.
But I, I do think this is exactly, and I'll be, I know I'm being long-winded. This is exactly what happened with the Board of Health when they presented their capital improvement plan, which was basically maintenance, good, 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 good and important and keeping that thing shiny. But we asked, well, what's your wish list? And so they went below the bottom of the line and they created that idea about the consolidation of the public health. And now we're going to have a building over there in, on Wharton Road because they put their wish list down and we figured out how to make it happen.
And I'd like to give a shout out to a couple of people in the audience that did a tremendous job in trying to make this a success last year. They really went beyond the call of duty. Ladies, I really appreciate everything that you did, especially with the hiring and everything. It was, you, you did a fantastic job. And I hope that, you know, we can have a, a most successful year this year. But I would still like to entertain the idea of seeing if we can't negotiate some kind of a contract with the PSA where we can take some of the pressure off you, yourself, Robbie, and some, some other county heads. I mean, city heads, excuse me.
Okay.
All right. So.
So that's a tasking. We're not going to vote on it.
Right. All right.
Need a motion to adjourn?
I was getting ready to move to adjourn.
All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Oh.
From Mrs. James, and a second from Mr. Riley. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain. That's unanimous, including the mayor. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the thought.